We'll call the meeting to order.
Hamilton.
Yes.
I'm sorry.
She jumped right in there, didn't I? It's all right.
Well, we started in the late.
Joy's here.
Rasmussen.
Martha.
Rasmussen. Revulinski.
Yes.
Flornoy.
Yes.
Ledger Kalin.
Yes.
Hammers.
Yes.
Hallie.
Yes.
Okay. Thank you. Any additions to this evening's agenda? I know I have a request from Scott Vaughn. There he is. All right. To address the council. So we'll do that under public appearances.
And we'll discuss part of the Ways and Means Committee meeting.
Okay. Ways and Means Committee report under committee reports. So we'll move to our consent agenda. We have approval of minutes from the October 27th council meeting. We have our September finance report, also our annual finance report, which has been published. We have a resolution approving employment for Park and Rec Department, liquor license approvals for Hy-Vee C-Store, Isla's, and the Cider House, and approval of claims in the amount of $294,896.99. Entertain a motion to approve.
So moved.
Moved by Flornoy.
Second.
Second by Revulinski. Any discussion?
Isn't the cider house already serving liquor?
I don't know.
It's a renewal, maybe.
It's brand new.
No, it's brand new.
They're already serving liquor.
They do have a liquor license. They're -- were unaware they had to have an additional amendment for the outside.
Oh, yeah, it's the outside, outdoor service.
I thought we had approved one for them within the last couple of months also.
So this is just for exterior. Okay.
Okay. All right. Any other questions or discussion? Not please call. Darren, did you have something?
I was just going to ask, is that outdoor setup as we've requested everybody else that does outside service of alcohol?
Yeah, they were very compliant. They actually were compliant before. They just hadn't applied through the alcohol beverage division to get that extension. We contacted, I called the, one of the owners, and he was very compliant and called the ABD the day I talked to him to get the additional. They already were, and the rule, they just don't want to have the license for it yet.
Okay. That's all I was curious. Good question. Thank you.
Thank you. And then please call the roll.
Flornoy.
Yes.
Revulinski.
Yes.
Hammers.
Yes.
Rasmussen.
Yes.
Ledger Kalin.
Yes.
Hallie.
Yes.
Hamilton.
Yes.
Okay, thank you. Scott, if you could come up. We had a request that we just didn't get quite on the agenda, but it's something we do on a recurring basis each year.
I meant to get here last meeting. I apologize for not getting it earlier, but I come to you as a member of the Lions tonight and for the lighting ceremony at the holiday time. The Lions Club has a soup supper that we put on, and we also provide carriage rides around the square, and we would like to continue that tradition this year with carriage rides from Doug Smith, and we have the people that will be in place to help people get on and get off, and I luckily get the job of scooping up the remains of the horses, so that will be taken care of to calm any of the fears about droppings around the square. So we'd just like your approval to carry on that tradition.
Do you have any parking that you block off as an area for that, Scott, on the south side?
Yes, south side there.
Okay. So you request then, what, half a block?
Yes.
Okay. So it's usually half a block from the middle west.
Right.
Okay.
Yep.
So motion then to approve the request by the Lions Club.
Move to approve.
Second.
Moved by Hammers, second by Flornoy. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, same sign. Thank you. Next item, we moved, council, we moved to our action items. First will be to set a public hearing for citizen participation regarding the proposed activities relevant to the application for our community development block grant funds. And again, that will be for housing rehabilitation. So November 24th at our next council meeting will be the time we would set a public hearing for that.
So moved.
As part of the application process that will be due in early December. Moved by Hamilton to set the public hearing date.
Second.
Second by Flornoy. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, same sign. Thank you. Next, we're also, we're setting our single meeting date. Generally, we have one meeting in December because of the holiday season, so we will set that in the middle of the month for Monday, December 15th. Entertain a motion to set December 15th for our December council meeting.
Move to approve.
Second.
It's moved by Rasmussen, second by Flornoy. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, same sign. Okay. Next, I'll ask Melanie Carlson to come up. We have several items regarding final projects. The first will be accepting the South Junction Road, Lincoln Avenue paving project as final. You have a letter included in your packet, council. Are any comments you want to make, Melanie, about this project?
Just letting you know what the total of the project cost was. The total project cost came to $318,493.64.
And our budget it was?
The bid was for $327,664.61. Sorry.
Great. Okay, council, then we have a recommendation from Melanie for approval and acceptance.
So was that over budget?
Under budget.
Under. Okay, sorry. Didn't understand.
Moved by Hallie to approve the project as final, second by Hammers. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, same sign. Thank you. And next, Melanie, would be our skate park.
The skate park, the total project cost was $160,295. This was a lump sum bid, so it comes in on, at the bid. A couple of things that have come up over the last couple of weeks is there are some hairline cracks in particularly on, in the bowl. It changes from four-foot depth to six-foot depth. And in that ramp area, they don't want, they don't want saw cuts there, so they let it crack on its own, and there is a crack there. We've talked with Spawn Ranch, I've looked at it, and they don't feel that it's a problem. What I'll say is that that concrete is super strong. The seven-day strength was over 4,000, so it's, it's very strong. It also has fiber reinforcements, which are little two-inch pieces of fiberglass, very, very thin, and that's what holds the hairline cracks together. And in fact, we don't want to saw cut where those hairline cracks are and seal it because it would break those fibers apart and actually make it change more. So I guess what I'm trying to say is that there are cracks, but we don't see them as a problem, and we feel that you can go ahead and accept the project. If there is something more structural, we feel it will show up within the next year that would be covered under the warranty period.
Is it where water's going to sit?
No.
Where these cracks are?
This cracking is probably normal.
I've never built a skate park before, so, but Spawn Ranch is saying that, especially on the bowl where there's an elevation change, that that is normal, because I said, to me it makes sense it would crack right there, and they said a hairline crack is actually less dangerous to the skateboarders than if you would put a saw cut in there. So they don't see it as a place to hold water either.
Although they did say they were going to watch it over the course of the winter and look at it again next spring, because also it was our donor that discovered the cracks initially. So we want to make sure that they're satisfied also, that their money was well spent.
Yeah.
So there wasn't any response back from the Mandarinos that I'm aware of.
No.
About, you know, asking them to do anything more than what they've recommended, so it'll be watched over the winter, and we'll keep a close eye on it next spring.
Yep. And I would agree with all of that. Additionally, that the topsoil was an expense that the foundation was going to take on themselves, and so Blue Ribbon Landscaping, well, we got a couple quotes from people. Blue Ribbon was the one, the low that was interested, and they're going to be putting the topsoil on this fall. In fact, I think they put a lot of it on now, and they will seed it back in the spring.
And how much was the donation for this project?
$160,000.
$160,000 was the donation?
Mm-hmm.
Okay. I, for some reason, thought it was $150,000.
It was, yeah, $160,000.
What was the last number we talked about?
Well, we were, we were hoping it would possibly come in at $150,000, but the donation was always $160,000.
Okay.
Yep.
Move to accept the project as final.
Yes. Moved by Revulinski.
Second.
Second by Hammers. Melanie, before we go, also mention.
Oh, the bikes. Yes. So Derek and John Morrissey, and perhaps Joe and I, will be working on some rules for the skate park, getting those posted.
Essentially, we had a great response.
Yes, yes. We've had lots.
To the park being open, but some of the response was from cyclists.
From cyclists. You know, we need to decide, and this comes from the donor, whether we want to allow bikes on it, but the one thing that we do not want on there are the bikes with the pegs on it. They're, I'd call them trick pegs. You see people stand on them and spin around. Those, obviously, they protrude from the bike, they'll scratch up the concrete, and those we absolutely do not want. So, but it will be a decision of the Park and Rec staff as to whether bikes are going to be allowed in general. It is, it does make a hazard for the skateboarders if bikes are on it, but the Spawn Ranch's reply was try and keep them off, too. So it's one of those, how much do we want to enforce? The pegs, it's a very obvious that it's damaging to the city property if they're on there, so it's a very easy thing to tell people no. So we'll be working on putting together some rules, updating the city ordinance to allow the skate park where it is, and get that taken care of over the next couple cold months.
Thanks, Melanie. Any other questions on that? Okay, all those in favor of accepting the project, say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, same sign. Thank you. Next, I'm going to ask our city attorney, John Morrissey, to come up and have us explain exactly what we're approving, looking to approve here to the council. This is a review of disclosure activities and participation in municipalities continuing disclosure cooperative initiative of the Securities and Exchange Commission. So essentially, John, when we borrow money, we are expected to report in a timely fashion.
Right.
And sometimes we can't do that because we don't have access to our audited, certified audited data, so there's a little bit of a workaround.
What they want you to do is every couple of years at least, complete a questionnaire, and it has to do with disclosures that we can't always make.
Right.
There's a procedure, if you don't make the disclosures, that you can go back for up to five years and straighten out what didn't get disclosed if something is different than what you reported on a questionnaire. I'm a little bit out of my element on this. This is something that you usually have an attorney that's specializing in either SEC work or bonding work. It's part of what goes into our big book.
Right.
On each bond issue we do, and basically Travis Squires.
Right.
Would probably be shepherding us if we didn't have this.
Well, we did have, yeah, we did have a conversation with Mark Corey, Travis, Joy, and myself, and the ailers firm is essentially doing a lot of this work for cities. There are many cities that are in this position. Again, it's just sort of crossing a T, dotting an I, making sure that you have, you know, you have yourself covered if the SEC, you know, wants to question anything about your bonding. And then the SEC also does some reporting, almost rating, on these. So this would allow us to, this, the resolution would allow for this to continue. I think something would still come back to us from ailers as far as, you know, having completed that process and satisfying the SEC requirements for reporting.
We're basically saying it's our policy that we want to cooperate.
Right.
In making this questionnaire as required, although it's supposedly it's a voluntary questionnaire, but it will improve our position as far as rating and so forth if we are doing this regularly, and the people that oversee our status as far as the rated bonding firm and so forth will say, yes, Fairfield regularly does that. So that's basically where we're going, is we're continuing something that in the past
we have done. Right. And it, obviously, we are always paying our bonds in a timely fashion, and it's just this reporting element that sometimes there's a little bit of a gap, and many cities face the same thing because they're not, they don't have those audited financials in the time period that I guess the SEC would like to see cities have it, so.
Right. I guess, I had a conversation on the phone also with Mark and also with Ivan Weber, who's been exposed to something, or there was a negative situation where something wasn't done that kind of slipped through the cracks. Not with us, but anyway, it was related to me, that they were both recommending that we stay with this, so.
Right.
Two cents worth, okay?
Thanks, John. So entertain a motion to approve the resolution.
So moved.
Moved by Revulinski, second by Flornoy. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, same sign. Thank you. Okay. Now we move on to our Libertyville Road Sanitary Sewer Project Right-of-Way Services Agreement. Karen, are you going to report on that?
Yes. Prior to this meeting, we had a utility committee meeting, and we discussed this particular contract. JGC is our right-of-way agent acquisition specialist doing work currently on step one of our sanitary sewer improvements. Since this is an engineering services agreement, it's not one that needs to go out for a public letting or bidding process. It's up to the discretion of the council to either accept or decline on this agreement, but it's in the best interest, the committee felt it's in the best interest of the city to continue to use an agent that is very familiar with our community right now and has had some success with negotiations with property owners around here through our step one process. The Libertyville Sewer, Libertyville Road Sewer Extension is a project that's coming out of funds that are currently in our wastewater utility budget. They won't be, we won't be borrowing any money from SRF funding in order to complete this project. The preliminary surveys and some preliminary design has been done by French Reniker already on this, and it's the recommendation of the committee that we accept this engineering services agreement with JGC.
Okay, thanks.
Right-of-way acquisition.
Very good. So will you make that a motion?
That's a motion.
Second.
Motion by Hamilton.
Second.
Second by Ledger Kalin. Any other questions or discussion? Not, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, same sign.
The next action item on our list here is authorizing step two sanitary sewer project right-of-way services agreement. Again, it's with the same company, JGC. They've done our step one work for us so far, and we feel that we would like to continue that work with them for step two. And they have done some preliminary work already for us on that step without an agreement in place, and I would like to see this agreement approved, and it's the wish of the committee to approve it as well.
Okay. Motion to approve the step two agreement with JGC.
Second.
Second by Ledger Kalin.
I have a question.
Yes.
I have a question for Melanie. Do you have any comment about disagreement or others? I mean, does it seem fair to you and proper?
Yes, I do want to correct. It's JCG.
JCG. Sorry. I always get that.
That's all right.
I'm dyslexic.
No, they've been pleasant to work with. They are, the agent that's been doing a lot of step one won't be continuing for the step two, but the person that will be doing step two has already been to the area. He has been to meetings. He was at the public meeting for step two, so they have been involved on step two, and I look forward to working with them.
So you think it's a good move?
I.
It's not too much money to pay for this agreement?
You know, it'd be nice if everyone just gave their easements and we didn't have to negotiate, and then I would say that, yes, it's too much, but we know that that's not going to be the case.
Thank you.
Okay. Any other comments? Not, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, same sign. Thank you.
All right. The next item, I'm sorry, I'm kind of moving through this myself.
First reading.
We would, the committee would like to propose that we pass a wastewater treatment user charge increase of 10% beginning January 1st of 2015. This is recommended through our rate study and our funding for the sanitary sewer improvements in step two and beyond that. So the recommendation of the committee was to ask the council to pass this from the first to the second reading. The increase will be from its current rate of 0.0588 cents per cubic foot use of water, and it will be increasing that rate to 0.06.
4.7.
4.7. So that is a 10% increase in that amount. The minimum monthly rate charge will go to $19.50.
50 cents.
60.
60, yeah.
60 cents. When, from?
And that went from.
17.82.
Lots of numbers.
Okay. But before we take any action on this, since this will be our first reading and it's a public hearing, I'll open the public hearing at this time and ask if there's any public comment on the ordinance. Seeing none, we'll close the public hearing and entertain a motion to pass from the first to the second reading.
So moved.
Second.
Moved by Hamilton, second by Ledger Kalin.
Question?
Yes.
I presume this is part of a master plan of rate increases. I mean, what's down the road as far as?
There's four more increases on the wastewater side of 10% yet, but at the end of that time period, we will review where we are at with our project costs and where we need to be with a rate increase at that time. Projected right now, rate increases that come after four years will be in the neighborhood of 3% to 5% is what we're projecting.
So what, in other words, 10% a year?
10% a year is what was proposed by the design study and rate study that were done by McClure Engineering in order to complete the projects that we have.
And so it's 10% of the current, it's going to keep going up, or 10% each year of how much it is?
10% of each year. You will, so, so our committee will come back in late October, beginning of November of next year with another proposed 10% increase.
Of the existing rate of that time. Okay. All right. Now we have the picture. Thank you.
Thanks. Please call the roll.
Hamilton?
Yes.
Ledger Kalin?
Yes.
Revulinski?
Yes.
Hallie?
Yes.
Rasmussen?
Yes.
Hammers?
Yes.
Flornoy?
Yes.
Thank you. Next, council, my mayor's report, like to ask for your support to appoint to the Area 15 Regional Planning Commission's Technical Advisory Committee. This is representation that we have had, a representative from Fairfield lawn for many, many years. This is, this is the group that will review projects ahead of the regional planning authority and for approval, road projects, trail projects, a number of different things. John Myers has served as our representative for many years. John retired, well, several years.
Actually, three.
Three, several, that's.
Before that, Jerry Long.
Okay, that's right. That's right. Jerry was our representative prior to that. So anyway, John is retiring in December, so we're looking to replace him on the committee and recommending that Melanie Carlson serve as our primary designate and Steve Hausner as our alternate to the TAC committee for Area 15.
Is this a paid position?
No. No, this is a monthly meeting. Monthly, or sometimes not every month.
About seven times a year.
Yeah, yeah. But, you know, this, the, it's, obviously, there's, the idea is to have shared representation between all the counties and cities that are represented, but it's good to have somebody from your home city right there advocating for your projects, so it's wise to have someone appointed.
Looking for a motion?
Right.
Moved by Revulinski, second by Hallie. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, same sign. Okay, thank you. That's everything. Committee reports, Personnel Committee.
Personnel Committee met Wednesday?
Thursday.
Thursday. And immediately when they closed session, had a discussion on a grievance of a termination. Took no action, came out closed session, rescheduled for another meeting.
It's a big report. It's a big report.
That's, okay, that's it. So we'll move on to our Water and Sewer Utilities Committee. Anything outside of what we've done?
Yeah. I attended a meeting with both French Reniker and McClure Engineering, and then Sean Worley, our plant superintendent, and Scott Connolly was also in attendance out at the sewer treatment plant. We discussed where we're moving with the engineering plans for the plan improvements and what type of timeline that we need to follow, and I'll have to have a follow-up discussion with our city attorney after this.
Okay. Thank you. Next, Michael, if you'll give us the latest on our blue zones.
Sure. Another milestone has been reached of our six areas of achievement. We've finished the work sites with saving the best for last. Mayor Malloy, you have the actual certificate.
Certificate of.
City of Fairfield has a designated blue zone worksite, and that's actually a pretty big achievement. Very few cities have tried this because it's difficult to do, so another feather in our cap, making the healthy choice, the easy choice for our employees. Now, I believe it's down to two schools, one of which is in the, in the system, meaning about to be designated, and the other one just about to be done, so it's time to start looking ahead. We'll have a site visit from the blue zone organizers. We'll come to town. We'll show them around, show them all our amazing health and wellness initiatives, so I'll tell you more about that. They'll probably end up doing a nice video about our project as well. It'll be a little, little something we can show around. So the one they did for Algonah was very well-produced. It was about eight minutes long, and it makes you feel all warm and fuzzy, so hopefully we'll get one of those as well. But I want to give a shout-out to Derek Wolf Cool and especially Christie Clark from the Parks and Rec Department, worked very hard. Originally, they were just going to do the Parks, Park and Rec Department, and then someone had the crazy idea to do all city departments, so it went from a difficult task to extremely difficult, but Christie did not give up and made it.
Great, thanks. Thanks, Michael. And then, so this is number 10 or 11?
10, well, 11 if you count.
That's right, the, our National Guard. So, you know, having, probably the most challenging part of the certification was to get 10 work sites to complete all of those different elements to be, to be certified, so it's a, it's a great accomplishment to get that to this stage. Also, we've made appeals over the last year for individual citizens to re-register for blue zones. We completed that as well, so we're very close. We should actually have an announcement, I'd say, within the next 15 to 30 days about our, about our accomplishment, so.
It's been two and a half years, two and a half-year project.
Next, Ways and Means, Sean.
Ways and Means met this evening at 5:00 PM. We had discussed several points, some of them I'll just report on, I don't think, perhaps some issues that we had voted on, it would be not appropriate to vote.
But the one thing that we, we did want to kind of settle tonight was the issue about sale of Logan Apartments. We found a realtor in Des Moines called Hubbell Real Estate who's willing to list it for us, and the thing is, we need to settle on a asking price. And there was some question, maybe, John, you could help us with this. You had mentioned that, you know, based on appraisal that we had at 1.7 million, that we couldn't accept less than that for this building. But our feeling is, based on talking to a number of interested parties so far that are nowhere near that price in their, in their interest, that perhaps we could get another appraisal and come, come up with a, a figure that's slightly lower than that. We were, we were hoping to list it for maybe 1.5 as a starting point, but based on the appraisal we have right now, is that doable?
Well, you, you can have it reappraised any time you want. If you stray from the appraisal, there's some ways around the appraisal price if you are going a couple of ordinary way around it as a development agreement, and that would be some kind of incentivization to whoever's buying to probably do something else. For instance, if somebody was coming in and saying they were going to add 50% more units and spend a lot of money on an economic development trust, you might consider doing a development agreement with them and making the difference between the appraisal and the sale price an incentive under the development agreement. There's a whole separate part of 403-1 and the following parts of the city finance section that lets you do that under a set of conditions, but that's not really anything that we've considered yet because we were looking for outright sale with a cash purchaser and not necessarily any intended expansion or economic development.
Well, John, my, my question was, when it came up in the meeting, my question was, are we restricted by state code just generally, or was that only for the bid process that we went through?
We're generally restricted. We can't make gifts to any private entity unless...
So we were, we were probably going to need, so we'll, we'll need to know what that percentage is, because as we get into any negotiations, even if we list it at 1.5, we're going to know, we're going to need to know what our limits are.
Yeah, the fact that we had it out there twice last spring and we didn't receive bids at the range of our appraisal is probably a good cause to go back for reappraisal. If the appraisal this time comes back in and the appraiser is aware of the fact that there weren't bids and subsequent attempts to sell, that is probably going to result in some softening of your price. That's legitimate, but beyond that, short of some kinds of conditions or incentivization part, you're still going to be, if you get an appraisal for 1.5, John, you're going to be pretty well restricted to sell it for the next appraisal.
Oh, okay.
So...
Right at the next appraisal.
Right.
So that's sort of the, a map, the plan here of selling it, but what, the action we want to take tonight is to actually list it at 1.5. Since we have the appraisal for 1.7, but it didn't sell, I mean, we didn't get any offers of that, are we legally safe to be able to, to go ahead and list it at 1.5 or not?
I'd suggest you try to have either another appraisal done right now, or that you, Hubbell Real Estate may have someone that could do you what I call a short form of appraisal, which is a market value analysis determination. It's kind of a letter instead of an appraisal book.
Right.
And that would be several pages of their opinion as to value, but that is a little self-serving because if they're listing at the same time that they're helping you set the price, somebody might question that. But the thing is, when you get to the point where you have any offer, you're still going to be back to the process that we described in our package last spring, and that is, you're going to put it out and have a public hearing on it. So you, pretty much, as long as you're transparent about what you're doing, you're still going to be open, okay with what you're doing, in my opinion.
Yeah, I, that, okay, that's fine. We just, just want to know what, you know, what our, what our bottom-line restrictions are going to be, though. I mean, I think that, you know, if we're going to engage a realtor, we need to know what, you know, what they're, what they're allowed to represent, because they're, they're, they're going to be representing us, and they need to be clear where, you know, bids, what our, what our bid restrictions are. So would you recommend, John, that we just immediately do another appraisal?
I think so.
Okay.
And my other thought is, if you come close to the appraisal price, you know, have your realtor and anybody that's involved in the appraisal put in what their opinions are about circumstances that might affect value also, because if you sometimes read the footnotes on the appraisals, they will give you some outs, so to speak.
Melanie, you getting all this?
I'm trying.
Okay.
Anyway, that's my secret.
Okay, thanks, John. I appreciate it.
So based on that, we'll table our motion and, and I'll present a, a report on our meeting that we can consider the other items next time.
Okay, thanks, John, appreciate it. If there isn't any other business for the council, entertain a motion to adjourn.
Move to adjourn.
Moved by Hamilton, second by Ledger Kaelin. All those in favor signify. Who was it? I'm sorry?
The hazard report.
Administrator.
How did I skip that?
Yeah.
Sorry about that.
Sorry, you guys. I'll be really, really fast.
No, 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 take your time.
No.
I apologize.
Um, tonight at 5:30, we had a meeting with Area 15. Michael and the chief were there. We are updating the hazard mitigation plan. The last time this was written was in 2010, and it is required by FEMA for you to keep updating this so that you're eligible for pre and post-disaster funding. On your, on the bench I left, basically, the conclusions of our meeting, and what Area 15 did was they ranked hazards based on their probability, their magnitude, how much warning time you have for those events, and how long those events happen. So they gave a list of, what is it, like 20-something items?
Eleven.
They narrowed it down to 12.
Yeah, there's, there's a couple ties, but we'll, we'll say 15 items. And as the top things for hazard risk assessment, a couple of things that we discussed were such as preparing yourself for a train derailment. Well, it's not really a hazard, it's, you know, nothing that you can mitigate short of not letting trains come through town anymore. So these were really focusing on natural disasters. Another thing that we discussed that we said would not be included would be the human, human diseases, and although these are things that you can mitigate for, they fall into the CDC realm, and so it doesn't, you're not going to get any FEMA money for a, a human disease outbreak.
Because zombie apocalypse type of thing?
Yeah, zombie apocalypse also is not covered in FEMA.
Where was he not, not covered?
Um, so there's no disaction needed, just letting you know about that report. We'll have another meeting January 26th at 5:30 to go over the actual report, and then we'll present that to the council. Done.
All right, thanks, Melanie. We have a motion and a second to adjourn. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, the same sign? Meeting adjourned.
Someone in jail told me.